Hidden Run last month.
It was, it was really hard for us because you know, like all of a sudden she's gone.
The witness in this case did not have to appear in court and it only took her a few minutes to give the information to the police. However, it meant the entire world to me.
If you see a hidden run, city leaders advise you to call 911. Get a description of the driver and their car and stop to help the victim, but do not chase the suspect. These tips could help catch those who leave the scene of a crime and they just might help save the life of the victims. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Again, if you see a hidden run, call 911 or if you have any information that could help police, call 877 LAPD 24/7 or 800-222-TIPS. While LA Catholic schools participate in a cyber symposium aimed at protecting kids from online predators, Gil Reyes reports from downtown LA.
Speaking to middle and high school students, law enforcement present a creepy situation. Someone on Facebook asks you to send photos of yourself that may be sexual in nature.
No, you would have to say no. Yeah.
Ninth grader Luna Soleh Holloway is taught to follow her gut feeling and be assertive when saying no.
Do what makes you feel comfortable, other than what makes everyone else feel comfortable.
This cyber crime safety symposium at the California Endowment invites students, teachers, and parents from around 60 schools within the LA Catholic Archdiocese. They're learning ways to avoid bullying and sexual exploitation of children on the internet.
Parents or the parents don't know who their kids are interacting with. They don't know who their friends are online. They don't know the places where they're going online.
And that can spell trouble. The LA City Attorney's Office warns parents about the rise in so-called sextortion cases. That's when online predators trap children into sending sexually explicit photos.
What they do is they use those pictures to extort, if you will, more pictures out of the, out of the kids and out of the adults. So it's a very, very scary thing and we're seeing a huge increase.
Young people get trapped in the cycle when they don't tell their parents for fear of getting in trouble. The LA City Attorney's Office urges kids to avoid popular sites like UMEgal, where chatting among strangers is encouraged. While parents are urged to use their own discretion in blocking sites and apps on their children's computers and smartphones that they feel are inappropriate, even though kids might not like this.
I don't think it's necessarily our job as parents to be in a popularity contest. Our job is to keep them safe and it's harder and harder with this cyberspace world out there that they love so much.
Being aware and talking to your kids can go a long way. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Our Lady of Grace and St. Genevieve schools were among the 60 Catholic campuses taking part. While it's out with the old and in with the new, one of LA's oldest and most iconic bridges gets a huge goodbye as the city prepares for its demolition and a new replacement. Anna Marcos takes us to the celebration.
The farewell party for the 83-year-old Sixth Street Bridge had fans taking pictures from all sides, from up high, from down below, and everywhere in between. This iconic landmark is one of several bridges that helped LA grow from a pueblo to a mega metropolis that expanded east into suburbs like Boyle Heights. Since 1932, it has served as a backdrop for films and commercials, as well as the backdrop of many Angelino's lives.
But unfortunately, because of the materials that were used to build the bridge, the bridge is practically eating itself up. It, it has a very high chance of coming down in an earthquake.
The bridge will be torn down early next year, but for now, the party is on and what a send-off. Games, food, and lots of music were on tap, including entertainment by war and taboo from the Black Eyed Peas.
Check it out, I grew up in Dogtown. And the projects of Dogtown went out until I was five years old, ladies and gentlemen. I represent East LA day and night.
Bridge lovers got to see a model of what the new bridge will look like. It will include bike and pedestrian lanes, as well as parks, soccer fields, and a plaza at the end of the bridge.
It is a way of getting from one side of the city to another, to connect Boyle Heights, East Los Angeles, with downtown, the Arts District, but it is also meant to be a place to be. It is a place to be on top of the bridge, to bring bicycles, pedestrians to the bridge to have large civic celebrations.
Whenever you replace 3,500 feet of a viaduct here, it's no easy challenge, but we're up for it.
The celebration continued into the night as Councilmember Jose Weisar and his family joined the masses in rocking out to the music. And then there were the fireworks, a majestic send-off for a bridge that saw the City of Angels grow up. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Now you can still use the old bridge until its demolition in early January. The main part of the new bridge is scheduled to be completed in 2018, with additional public spaces completed by 2019. While yoga, gymnastics, and one-mile run, local kids are up to the challenge issued by one city councilman who's made physical fitness a top priority. Gil Reyes reports.
And then float forward like an airplane.
Expanding their young minds and bodies, these middle school students from Silver Lake take part in a different type of PE exercise: yoga.
It's relaxing and you get to exercise a lot and you get to have fun with all your friends.
It's one of several activities often run in at Bellevue Recreation Center at Councilman Mitchell Farrell's fitness challenge.
We bring about 100 kids from five different local schools. We bus them in, we put them through five different rotations with the idea of promoting fitness.
That's Councilman Mitchell Farrell all right, with a near-picture-perfect landing. The former high school gymnast watches children practice their dismounts.
I was heavily influenced by a world of fitness when I was young, and so I want to provide an opportunity for youth in the 13th District to experience the same thing and the same opportunities that I had.
1984 Olympic track and field silver medalist Danny Harris coaches running drills. He says LA's childhood obesity rates could be easily reduced with daily exercise that's fun.
If we could just plant the seed in some of these youngsters today, how important it is and how good it feels, I think we will have done what we came to accomplish.
One of the events being a one-mile run. All the other kids were doing it and did it pretty well. I'm gonna give it a shot. I'm actually gonna run it. About halfway through, a new batch of children join me. One of them, Eric Paz, finishes his mile at 6 minutes 15 seconds, easily beating me. Later, he offers me tips.
Well, like if you run, like if you jump with your legs and you could be really quick too.
We offer programs for adult and children and families, all low cost. So visit a recreation and parks facility in your neighborhood and check out what they have to offer because chances are there's gonna be something for you.
Breaking a sweat in Silver Lake, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Well, the city has a variety of programs to choose from at all 450 parks and 150 rec centers. While it's not every day you become a US citizen, even rarer still that you do it on Constitution and Citizenship Day. Anna Marcos takes a look as Mayor Eric Garcetti helps welcome LA's newest US citizens.
I hereby declare on oath. I hereby declare on oath.
They come from every corner of the world, but whether they are from Russia, Central America, Africa, the Middle East, or Asia.
With allegiance and fidelity.
They're about to become US citizens.
Against all enemies, be welcome to our family.
And on this annual Constitution and Citizenship Day, they become US citizens on a day meant to honor all immigrants turned Americans.
With liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Eric Garcetti is on hand for the occasion, an immigrant of multiple origins himself.
My grandparents and great-grandparents were the first immigrants in my family's story to come here. They came on my father's side from Mexico, where they had come across the border during the Mexican Revolution. My mom's side came from Poland and Ukraine and Russia. I have an Italian last name, I'm half-Mexican, half-Jewish.
Some can barely mouth the words of the Pledge of Allegiance. Others are grateful beyond words. Some have bigger plans than others.
My plan is to study hard and get a scholarship for college.
That's really it, I don't have a plan.
Well, he's got a little bit of time on his life path, but for many, as US citizens, nothing now seems impossible.
I am here and I am testament of what is possible in this country. Now you are here and you are gonna be part of the next generation of proving what the American dream is.
First on the American agenda, selfies and pics to post on your favorite social media to remember the day you became part of the American dream on Citizenship Day. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Mayor Garcetti told the new citizens to get their friends on the pathway to citizenship. He says 800,000 immigrants in LA County are eligible. He also said he will always fight anti-immigrant sentiment because this country was built by immigrants. While molding the next generation of technology gurus, city leaders put the brakes on new tax certificates for medical marijuana dispensaries. And one of the oldest streets in LA gets a special honor. All these stories in City Beat. A group of LA high school students took part recently in a 24-hour hackathon event at Rhubarb Studios in downtown LA. The month-long campaign, which partnered with various tech companies and LA Mayor Eric Garcetti's office, aims to spread resources and foster a love for computer science among K-12 students. They were encouraged to come up with ideas, projects, and create innovative solutions.
We wanna make this a hub, so right now, you're seeing the next best generation right now, the next best talent. You're seeing the future and we're really standing on the shoulders of giants.
This is part of our efforts to make sure that we have a workforce trained for the 21st century.
The city council voted 13 to 0 to support Councilwoman Nuri Martinez's motion to stop giving out new business tax certificates for medical marijuana dispensaries, since most such businesses are illegal in Los Angeles. Despite the 2013 voter approval of Prop D, which banned most medical marijuana businesses in Los Angeles, the city has continued to issue tax certificates and collect taxes from them, illegal or not. Downtown LA's Alvera Street has been recognized as one of the country's top-five great streets by the American Planning Association. In its designation, the association said the street is a place where visitors can get a taste of Mexican culture and a sense of history that still stands preserved in the surrounding buildings and plazas. Alvera Street is one of the oldest streets in Los Angeles, where the city was born as a Spanish pueblo in 1781. With sirens and flashing lights, a fleet of classical emergency cars made their way through city streets during the 12th Annual 10-4 Day Parade, featuring officers from the California Highway Patrol, LAPD, Los Angeles Fire, and Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. The staging began at the Los Angeles Fire Museum and the cars then made their way over to Grommern's Chinese Theater to pay homage to television cop Roderick Crawford, who starred in the 1950 series Highway Patrol at his Walk of Fame star.
It was to honor law enforcement officers and what they do.
A local farmer's market is offering more than just fresh fruits and vegetables. Some new artwork is bringing a fresh, new vibe to the area. This vibrant mosaic now welcomes visitors to the Echo Park Farmer's Market, blending the fresh and healthy lifestyle with the beauty of local art. It all came together with the help of community kids.
We did the top parts right here, on the skinny ones, on the top of the, all of the rest of the big ones. It was like, it was like hard, but not that hard.
It took local artist Katrina Alexi five months to complete the brightly colored mosaic, which was made using all recycled tiles that were earmarked for the landfill.
The whole idea was to take material that would be thrown into a landfill and make art out of it.
The 40-foot-long mosaic serves as a celebration of healthy foods, showcasing various tiles of fruits and vegetables that can be found at the farmer's market, which is now in its ninth year. Councilmember Mitchell Farrell commissioned the artwork to replace the sterile concrete block wall that stood adjacent to the farmer's market booths and vendors.
It will improve the look and feel of this neighborhood, which is important for me as a policymaker, to improve the quality of life where we live and work, so we can have a quality experience wherever we are.
The artwork is located on Logan Street, just south of Sunset Boulevard. The project was made possible by the LA Department of Transportation and Cultural Affairs, and the kids who helped build it can't wait to do it again.
Yes, I would like to do another mosaic art with tiles, because it's so much fun and many people like mosaic art and everybody will enjoy it.
City leaders hope the art display will serve as a model for other projects citywide. In 1945, World War II came to a victorious end. Though generations have passed, the spirit of '45 was commemorated recently at the Battleship Iowa in San Pedro. Rich Samuels has more.
The USS Iowa was a legendary battleship of World War II. It carried President Roosevelt to a meeting with Allied leaders in 1943. And today, at its final home in San Pedro, it stands as a tribute to the brave men and women who fought for our freedom. On the 70th anniversary of that long-ago victory, the Iowa hosted a commemoration to those that some have called "the greatest generation."
We're here, standing here, in what we call celebrating the American spirit, which is celebrating the sacrifices, the work, and the commitment that these folks made to make it possible for us to be here.
And so today, we celebrate yet again, our veterans, our, those brave men and women who fought for years so that we might be able to enjoy a country of freedom and liberty and justice for all.
Joining the commemoration was the Council General of the Philippines, who recalled the great sacrifice paid by that island nation as it fought for freedom side by side with American soldiers.
In the Philippines, it was very much honored to be part of the fight for freedom in the 1940s to defend our part of the Pacific.
Many lost their lives in a fight for freedom, and today, 70 years later, the survivors are fading into history. Their memory, however, won't be forgotten. From the Battleship Iowa, this is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
For more information on visiting the Battleship Iowa Museum, visit pacificbattleship.com. While attend a meeting on ways to properly dispose of your old medications and syringes, a Beatles tribute band takes you back in time, and a laser show that's out of this world. All this and this week's things to do. Is your medicine cabinet full of unused or expired medication? Do you know how to properly dispose of your needles or syringes? While LA County is in the process of developing an ordinance to ensure safe, convenient, and proper disposal of these items, and needs your input about this important public health and safety issue. Attend a public meeting and voice your opinion on Friday, November 13th at 1:30 PM at the LA County Hall of Administration Building, located at 500 West Temple Street in downtown Los Angeles, in room 374. Go to publichealth.lacounty.gov for more information. Go on a musical journey through the best songs of one of the greatest bands of all time with the Beatles tribute band Ticket to Ride. From the Fab Four's early days as mop-topped leaders of the British Invasion, through their psychedelic Sergeant Pepper era, Ticket to Ride recreates an authentic Beatles concert experience that includes period-accurate costume changes. If you don't have a time machine, this show at the Warner Grand Theater might be your best chance to experience what a Beatles live show was like. Get your ticket to ride on Saturday, November 14th. The Warner Grand Theater is located at 478 West Sixth Street in San Pedro. Experience live visual music amplified by lasers during Lazarium's Pink Floyd "Dark Side of the Moon." Listen to "Breathe," "On the Run," "Time," "Great Gig in the Sky," "Money," "Us and Them," any color you like, "Brain Damage," "Eclipse," and an encore of "One of These Days," lit up in incredible laser light. Beautiful laser illusions and laser effects with spectral intensity in an intimate backstage studio environment. A choreographed laser spectacular performed live to Pink Floyd's musical masterpiece. Lazarium, the cosmic laser concert, features totally unique laser effects and an immersive live laser experience with visual energy you'll never forget. Lazarium is music for your eyes. Lazarium is located at 6911 Havenhurst Avenue #102 in Van Nuys. For more, visit Lazarium.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Do you have unwanted medications, needles, or syringes in your home and don't know what to do with them? Join us and share your thoughts at a public meeting on November 13th at 1:30 PM at the Hall of Administration in room 374, located at 500 West Temple Street in downtown Los Angeles. Go to publichealth.lacounty.gov for more information.
Car accident deaths are a possibility, a probability. What if you don't get a chance to say goodbye? What if there are no more birthday celebrations or friendly conversations because you're just not here? Put the phone down, practice hands-free driving, and give yourself and others a chance to participate in life. Obey the rules of the road.
Join the Emergency Management Department for a Town Hall meeting on Thursday, December 3rd at 6:30 PM at the Granada Hills Recreation Center in Granada Hills. We review ways you, your neighbor, and your business can prepare for El Nino. Also let you know what the City of Los Angeles is doing to prepare for adverse weather. City officials and department representatives will help you understand your community's risks and answer questions related to wet winter weather. If you're unable to attend, information on El Nino preparedness for Los Angeles can be found at www.elninoLA.com.
Hi, I'm Jen Mahoney in Studio City. You're watching LA City View Channel 35, where you can get the best in culture and arts. It's our city, it's our channel.
Hey, just go.
Hey, just go!
Good morning, good morning. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council chambers. Today's date, in fact, it is Friday, the 13th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 AM, and all are welcome. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you call the roll, please?
Plumen Filbanen, Buscainos, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Fuentes moves. Harris Dawson seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bannan moves. Rue seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests from the Department of Building and Safety to continue items 1O and 1Q for two weeks to December 1st, to receive and file items 1D, 1G, and 1U inasmuch as the liens have been paid in full, and to receive and file item 1E inasmuch as the lien was partially rescinded and paid.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order? That brings us where?
Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards?
Cards on 1 and 2.
Okay, let's move on to the next section.
Items 3 through 17 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Entertainment and Facilities Committee report for item 3 has been submitted and circulated for council consideration.
Okay, so 3 through 17 specials members, I don't see any. Let us prepare to vote on those items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, let's move on to the next section.
And, Mr. President, the ordinance on item 3 will be held over for one week unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Okay, if we get to 12 today, please remind me so I will reconsider that item and take it up. So that brings us to what?
Items 18 through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order? Are those items are now before us? Do we have cards on any of these items?
Yes, sir. Cards on items 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Okay, so what else? Is that the entire agenda?
Yes, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay. Mr. Englander, could I borrow you for one minute, sir?
All right, Mr. President, we actually have a full house here today, so I don't think
Me. Renaknich Nahanish. We'd like to ask the leader to say a few words to introduce us, and then we'll open up with a prayer.
Thank you so much. Good morning, colleagues.
you're going to have... Once again, you're on 100% track record, I believe, and any problems with this little
And to everyone in the chamber, welcome to Los Angeles City Hall on this very, very important day.
pooch here.
To kick off American Indian Heritage Month, I would like Kim Marcus of the Bird Singers
So the floor is yours.
Well, you know, in order to make sure I have everyone view this fine companion
to lead us in a prayer to begin.
animal, I want to make sure he's on television, not me. But I want to make sure it's Dennis, right, Arlene? In fact, I'm joined with Arlene from Animal Services, and there we are.
Mea yah. Sen'ya lang. Ami na. La'na lang. Mea. Oea. Ma'achamama. Umu. Melkisun pey's chem'se. Mu'umu kiva. Tembo wa'apiva. Kiva kii kiva. Ma'achamama kiva. Temakka tamaka. Kichu pataweka. Ma'awsonaka. Butcha beka'tamana. Chepde'wey kiva. Mu'umu ma'kiva. In the Kooteska, hem'ya wey. Here, we're gonna open up. Blow seven directions. Ma'achamama. Ha'amna. Chamna. Our creator. We're gonna blow our voices into the directions of seven directions. To bless this area, you as a people, to honor you on this great day, to recognize our people, that we may further go as Indian people, to grow, to honor each other, and for the City Council, to honor us is a great event. So we add some greatness to bless us today. All is good with our blessing, so may we go forth now. Ma'achamama.
Thank you so much, Kim Marcus. That prayer was done in the Kooia language, of which he is a member of the tribe. Council President Wesson, esteemed colleagues, I want to officially welcome you to the 2015 Heritage Month Celebration in the City of Los Angeles for Native America. Now, I'd like to welcome Deanna Naniba Tally, who will sing the National Anthem in her traditional Navajo language.
Ladies and gentlemen, I can begin having you take your seats, so everybody else, please. Take your seat left and right.
Ya'de shkado shirina e she'ay Deanna Tally yinishya. Tani's oni nishle bit'ati ba'shishin tapahanda shichay na'kai dina enda shenelle. Shema e Berlin Johnson hoo'ye. Shishe'ay e Glenn Tally hoo'ye. Shemasana e Gilberta Johnson hoo'ye. Shichay e Eddie Johnson hoo'ye. Shenella astan e Gladys Tally hoo'ye. Shenella hastin e John Tally hoo'ye. Zedal doy nasha. Didsara yinish ta. Farmington High School de'os ta. Hello, hello, friends and family. My name is Deanna Tally. I am of the Tangle Clan, born for within his cover clan. My maternal grandfather is for the Water Edge People, and my paternal grandfather is for the Mexican Clan. I am 14 years old. I am from... I'm originally from Hard Rock, Arizona, in the Navajo Nation. I am a freshman in high school at Farmington, New Mexico, and I'm here... I traveled here to represent the Navajo Nation and my school, so I've been assisting the National Anthem in Navajo. So if those of you who can stand, please do. Tanat a'iyeyegone himelini. Nabahiyeh ka'ya. Nihech'ey endenda inepasenilgri. Nabahiyeh takri. He'teyabesi hasen. Tu'neha'dase tsosendi. Tu'shi esobesenigo. Ka'nehetha desye.
Thank you, Deanna Naniba Tally. Another big round of applause for the National Anthem sang in the Navajo language. That was beautiful. Colleagues, joining me today, in addition to the lovely prayer from Dr. Kim Marcus, we have someone very familiar to this chamber, and that is Congresswoman Janice Hahn of the 44th Congressional District. We also have another honoree today, formal tribal councilman for the Pechanga Indian Tribe, Andrew Maciel. We also have the Los Angeles City-County Native American Indian Commission, including Commissioner Tracy Perez. And also, our good friend Linda Valbuena, Chairwoman of the San Manuel Tribe, and various tribal leaders and representatives gathered here today. Big round of applause for the entire delegation. As I mentioned at the outset, we have one of our honorees I'd like to bring up first, and that is the irreplaceable personality, force of nature, that is known as Congresswoman Janice Hahn. Please stand, Janice. I'm gonna talk a little bit about Mr. Hahn, the minister, and I believe your grandfather.
Yes.
Yes, to Janice Hahn, who was an important Christian religious leader among the Morongo Tribe of Indians. The Hahn family has always been supportive of Native America, the Native American community in Los Angeles. It gives me great pleasure to recognize Congresswoman Janice Hahn this morning as one of today's honorees. Janice.
Thank you, Mitch, and it's so wonderful for me, you can imagine, being back here in what I think is the most beautiful city council chambers in the country, and certainly before the greatest city council in the entire country. It's just a pleasure and an honor to be here with my councilmember, Joe Buscaino. Thank you, Joe, for the work that you're doing. I noticed your "Save the L.A. Waterfront" sign on your desk, and we're all on the side of that. I just want to thank you for this recognition today. And also, you know, it was my father, Kenny Hahn, who was responsible for creating the Indian Commission along with Supervisor Ed Edelman back in 1976. He recognized the importance of a commission like this that would have to L.A. County, which is hard to believe, and a lot of people don't believe this or know this. L.A. County is home to the largest Native American population in the United States. And over the last 39 years, since this creation of a commission, you have been stalwart advocates of urban Native American communities. You've been responsible to Native Americans, whether it's for good schools, for adequate health care, infrastructure. This country has not done as good of a job as we should in terms of our Native Americans in this country. We need to do better to increase funding for services and empower tribes to succeed in this country. And here in Los Angeles, we know that the United American Indian Involvement Health Center relies on federal funding to keep its doors open, and I have been proud to support funding to that when I've been in Congress and will continue to do so. My father was a proud supporter, my grandfather, and I am so pleased to be here today to celebrate with you and the City Council of Los Angeles on Native American Heritage Month. It's an honor to receive this honor. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And here's your honor.
My camera. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice Hahn. I am especially honored to be able to shine the council spotlight on the cultures and traditions of the rich Native American community in the Los Angeles area, as Ms. Hahn just mentioned, home to the largest Native American community anywhere. I'd next like to recognize Andrew Maciel. Andrew Maciel has devoted more than 25 years of his life to serving California tribal governments, including as the Vice Chair of the Tribal Alliance of Sovereign Nations, or TASAN. He has accumulated extensive experience in tribal economic development and financing for tribal government projects. Mr. Maciel, please step forward and say a few words.
Well, thank you, councilmen, for those kind words. It seems like it was just yesterday I started. Actually, I had jet-black hair when I began all this. Yeah. Through the years, we've done a lot. I've worked with many people in this chamber, including Mr. Wesson, and Corret, and Sadio at the legislative level, and it's been a real success for us to work with tribes throughout the state in terms of development. As they mentioned, I've been a real advocate for tribal economic development for most of my adult life in terms of challenging that and going beyond what gaming enterprises has done for tribes. Tribes are now engaged in further development of their communities, adapting to non-gaming activities, and I think there's been a strong economic growth and a tribute to the tribe's determination. My good friends here, Lynn Valbuena, Richard Gomez, and others that are in this chamber, it's not been just me, it's been a collective effort of all of us to make those sort of changes. And I just want to thank the City Council for acknowledging myself today and our achievements, but we certainly... It's not done alone, it's with your cooperation and the folks around us, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. The Los Angeles City-County Native American Commission was created to serve this population through a joint effort of members of the Native American community and the city and county of Los Angeles. To say a few words, we have a representative of the City-County Native American Commission, and that is Ms. Tracy Perez.
Good morning, and thank you, City Council. On behalf of the Indian Commission, we extend our appreciation to the leadership of Council member O'Farrell, and through his leadership, that is why we are here today, and why the American Indian Commission will be celebrating our 40th year this coming June 2016. With that said, we have some gifts that we would like to present to our honorees. The two potteries on the end is a handmade pottery from the Akuma Pueblo. The designers are Nancy Thompson and Brian Delamore, and the God's Eye is made by J.R. Davis from the Navajo and Cho'atah Nation. So our first gift, we would like to honor Ms. Janice Hahn. And our second is the God's Eye to Andrew Miskell. And our final gift goes to Councilmember Mitchell Farrell for his continuous support to our community.
Thank you, it is beautiful. That is beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tracy, thank you so much. I'm gonna set this down in a safe place where it doesn't even have a chance of falling off of anything. Oh, thank you. Wonderful. How beautiful. Thank you for those gifts. I also want to acknowledge some special guests and organizations with us today. I'd like to acknowledge Los Angeles City Council, City-County Native American Indian Commission, there are other commissioners here. I'd like to acknowledge Chief Anthony Morales of the Gabriellino Tribe. Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs, who helped put this whole thing together today. Los Angeles, thank you. Yes, round of applause. Torres Martinez, Desert Kooia Indians. Brian McDonald of TASAN. We would not be able to do this without the help of TASAN, so Brian McDonald of TASAN. And unable to join us today, I think, is A.C. Green, former Laker and Native American, who has joined us the past couple of years but wasn't able to show today. I'd also like to thank Ron Andrade for your... you, there we are, of pulling everything together every year to make this such a wonderful event. And then, before I would say a few more words, I'm going to have Lynn Valbuena to say a few words. Lynn?
Well, good morning. Good morning, everyone. What an honor to be here with all of you today in downtown Los Angeles. Thank you so much, here to celebrate Native American Heritage Month. Mr. Council President, Councilman O'Farrell, and members of the City Council of Los Angeles, I am Lynn Valbuena. I am Chair of the Samuel Band of Mission Indians. We are located 70 miles northeast of Los Angeles, and I am also the Chairwoman of the Tribal Alliance of Sovereign Indian Nations, which is in three counties here in California. TASSN is an intergovernmental association of nine federally recognized tribes in Southern California, and we're dedicated to protecting and promoting our sovereign governmental rights and for protecting our cultural identity and interests of federally recognized tribes. Members of TASSN are the employers of more than 15,000 Californians, providing more than $750 million in wages and benefits. I am here along with Brian McDonald, who was just introduced. Brian is standing right behind me. Brian is a former council member of his tribe, Chemoebi, which is at Lake Havasu. He is the Secretary of our association, Tribal Alliance of Sovereign Indian Nations. We are both here today to honor our colleague, Andy Masial, of the Pachanga Band. Andy has been a great friend for many, many years. I won't say how many years, because then I'll be telling my age. But Andy has devoted more than 25 years of his life to serving California tribal governments, accumulating extensive experience in tribal economic development and financing for tribal government projects. Andy, as we affectionately call him, was first elected to the Pachanga Tribal Council in 1982 and served until 1986. He then served on the council from 1996 to 2000. In February 2009, Andy was elected to the Pachanga Tribal Council in a special election and recently resigned in 2015 in order to pursue other endeavors, and I won't say what those endeavors are, but it's not LA City Council, so don't worry. Andy has worked as tribal administrator to the Suboba Band of Luceno Indians, the Palma Band of Mission Indians, and the Pachanga Tribe. Andy has also served as Business Manager of the Paula Indian Tribe and Planning Director for the Reservation Transportation Authority, a consortium of 22 Southern California tribes. In 1998, Mr. Masial co-founded and chaired the first Native American Caucus for the California State Democratic Party, the only organization of its kind in the nation. Thank you so much, Andy. Andy serves as the ad hoc Chair of the Caucus and is a member of the California State Democratic Party Executive Board Finance Committee. Andrew's commitment to California Native Americans led him to serve the California Nation's Indian Gaming Association as its elected treasurer. He has also chaired the IDRS, which is the Advisory Committee to the Youth Caucus, a program that instructs and empowers Indian youth in California to take an active role in monitoring the California policymaking. Masial also served on the Board of Directors of California Indian Legal Services for 11 years, five of which were as Chairman of the Board. More recently, Andy served as Vice Chairman of our TASSN organization from 2012 to 2015. And to underscore his passion for public service and the betterment of the region for everyone, Andy also served as the first representative to the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, Regional Council, from 2006 to 2008, and again from 2012 to 2015. We look forward to the rest of today's Indian Day's activities with all of you, and we hope you will be able to join us in further recognizing Andy when we go out to the courtyard, as well as Councilman O'Farrell and Congresswoman Han. Thank you all so much.
There will be a few more brief remarks, but it's time to present the certificate for Native American Day 2015, so please step forward, Janice. Mr. Masial.
Beautiful. Gorgeous.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Can everyone see? Just a little bit more. Yeah, there we go. Forward.
Claire. Okay. You take one on my camera.
Okay.
My photographer. Thank you. Congratulations.
And before we reveal the program, I want to, again, give special thanks to our own Cultural Affairs Department and Ray Rivera of the Bahi Creative Group for designing this wonderful program today that you have before you. But in closing, I have a few things to say, and it goes as follows. There is no denying that hundreds of years of profound injustice to Native peoples followed the arrival of the first European explorers. Centuries of wars, broken treaties, disease, forced migration, exploitation of natural resources, forced religious conversions, marginalization of and isolation of indigenous people served as a constant backdrop as we forged our own collective identity and developed into the United States of America. Our own form of representative government was largely based on that of the Iroquois Nation, a confederacy of Native American tribes formed around AD 1200 in the Northeast that included the Seneca, Cayuga, Onondaga, the Oneida, and the Mohawk. Around 1720, the Tuscarora Nation was admitted to the League as the sixth member. Benjamin Franklin and Thomas Jefferson drew on the experience of the Iroquois Nation in developing the process to form the House of Representatives. They are part of who we are as a government. None of us standing here today as Native American tribal members aren't patriotic or willing to sacrifice for this great country. In fact, it is our ability to transcend incredible odds and process the experiences of our ancestors that helps provide the context of who we are today. As Americans, we should never deny our history nor avoid the facts. To do so denies us all the ability to become more enlightened, more understanding of one another, and more united as a people and as a nation. That is why today I introduced a motion to add Indigenous Peoples' Day to the Administrative Code in the City of Los Angeles. I also introduced a motion calling for a report on Native American historical sites in Los Angeles so that they may be officially recognized with the significance they deserve. In moving forward with these initiatives, current and future generations of Angelenos will understand the deeper complexities of our own history and be able to reflect on the many contributions Native Americans have made in our society. We Angelenos celebrate our diversity better than anyone else, anywhere in the world. What better way to embrace diversity than by shining a light on the rich history of a people that sacrificed everything for what would become the great nation we are today? In fact, the greatest nation the world has ever known. Thank you.
All right. So we've got, Mr. Wesson would like to say a few words as well.
I think this is a sign that I should be at my chair, but Mitch is doing such a good job. First of all, I want to thank Mr. O'Farrell. Ever since you've been here, when we celebrate, it's a special twist, a different level of sensitivity since you've been leading us on this celebration. I want to welcome Congresswoman Han home, and we hope to see you home on a regular But I rise because I just have to take a moment and say a few words about a man that I have the highest respect for, and that is Andy over here. Give Andy another round of applause. When I was struggling to try to become a member of the California State Assembly, I was taken on a trip to Pachanga where we met, and I met a fiery guy, God rest his soul, Billy, was it Billy Todd? Billy Todd. And the two of them took me on a tour and explained a lot of things to me and accepted me as a genuine friend. And I've had an opportunity to watch all of the phenomenal work that Andy has done. I can remember one state convention, Democratic Convention, and you have the various caucuses. The Native American Caucus had the biggest turnout. That's because Andy and his guys provided food, so everybody went to that caucus meeting. But anyway, you couldn't have selected a finer man to honor today. So again, I want to give you another round of applause. I'm glad that you've been my friend since like 1997, and it's just so good to see you up and around and still doing good work. Let's give Andy another round of applause.
And with that, we will do the big unveil. Everyone. and everyone is invited.
We've got a couple special announcements of some special guests here. First, Councilmember Huizar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and if I could have everyone's attention, please. And colleagues, we have some special guests with us today. First, I would like to welcome a delegation visiting us from Tlaxcala, Mexico, who are visiting this week to meet with different community advocates and law enforcement agencies to learn about different methods and ways to help improve their communities back home, ranging from human rights to public safety. The delegation consists of four mayors and 21 public trustees who all represent 25 different municipalities in Tlaxcala. When they heard about Councilmember O'Farrell's presentation recognizing American Indian Heritage Month, they wanted to join and be part of it, as there are many similarities in Mexican history and U.S. history when it comes to our first settlers who helped define our cultures and traditions. In Tlaxcala, the Tlaxcalans were one of the oldest Native Mexicans, along with the Ustics, who helped lead to the Spanish defeat and Mexican freedom. Let's welcome our friends visiting from Tlaxcala. Bienvenidos amigos aquí en el Concilio de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Estamos aquí juntos para mejorar las vidas de los mexicanos en México como aquí en los Estados Unidos. Bienvenidos y gracias por estar con nosotros. Mr. President, and also, I would like to welcome a very special guest as well. We have the Governor of Yamaguchi, Tuscomasa Murawaka, who is here as well. Welcome, sir. Please give him a big round of applause.
Welcome.
The Governor and his colleagues are visiting Los Angeles as part of the fourth Yamaguchi World Grand Meeting, where they will be partaking in some incredible events around the world. Governor Murawaka was inaugurated in February of 2014, but began his career as a member of the Joint Ministry of Home Affairs, having worked in the fields of planning, public finance, and fire and disaster management. The Governor has been a treasured member of the political world in Yamaguchi, Japan. Thank you so much for visiting us, Governor, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you so much, and welcome. And we also have with us the Council General of Japan. If we could give him a big round of applause, a good friend of City Hall, the City of Los Angeles. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And I also notice we've got some distinguished leaders sitting up here on the right, and very well dressed, mind you, and incredibly well behaved. Somebody's got to make sure that we introduce them. Mr. Rue, if you could, please. Who are your guests?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my honor, and, guys, you want to stand? It is my honor and privilege to introduce you, the third graders, from the great Sherman Oaks Elementary School. Let's give them a round of applause. Our future leaders, our future public servants, and guys, you guys are on TV. See that up there? And I want to recognize our teacher that's with them today, Teacher Robin Arnold. This is their annual visit to City Hall to teach our kids about civic education and how City Hall works. There's 29 kids and five parents. I just want to take this time to acknowledge the huge diversity that Sherman Oaks Elementary has, and the fact that parental involvement is also something key for this school. You know, we know there's been a lot of cutbacks in LAUSD, and they have had to cut back on programs like art, music, computer, science, extracurricular activities. And it's the parents who stepped up in Sherman Oaks to volunteer their time so their kids could come and have an opportunity like today. So, learn. You know, we had this presentation, Councilmember Mitchell O'Farrell, like I told you guys earlier, did this whole Native American presentation so you guys could learn, and I look forward to having And, and I look forward to having lunch with you guys afterwards. Thank you for coming, our future leaders.
All right, thank you very much. School uniforms have changed a lot. Look at these guys. They look, you guys look great. We got tuxedos and dresses. You guys are fantastic.
They dressed up to their nines because they wanted to show respect and show that they got what it takes to be here. Thanks, guys.
All right, fantastic, thank you. Can one of you lend Councilmember Bonin one of your ties later on? All right, fantastic, thank you so mu—what? All right, and Councilmember Sadio, I believe you have a special presentation as well.
Yes, in that same spirit that we had today of recognizing Native Americans and welcoming our friends, colleagues, brothers, cousins, sisters, aunts, uncles, and our whole families from the North, always working in spite of the tumult and tremor being caused by some people in this country who have no respect for the rich relationships between the United States and Mexico, we're happy to welcome from Mexico the Honorable Member Mayor from the city of Tepeque of the state of Nayarit, Calcalde, por favor, levante se. And they are here to announce the opening of a local office that will provide support services for the immigrant community to work with community leaders to establish programs that can benefit residents of Los Angeles. They will be, and they are embracing, what we refer to as our Dreamers, and working with us to set up a program to provide them support and opportunities for them to return and to come back and to be part of a rich bridge of dialogue between our two cities and our two nations. Bienvenido, muchisimas gracias a todos que están aquí.
Great, thank you very much, and welcome. To you as well, thank you all. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and take a couple of the agenda items. We have several that have cards. First, we'll go ahead and take up item 18. John Walsh.
And now, here we are at item 18. Again, this is the REAP account. People thank me when they see me on the street for explaining this to them. These are various prob—what happened was here that the landlord let the apartment go to hell. They went to the city. The city said, if you don't repair the code violations, you're not getting a rent anymore. And the rent's gonna go into escrow. And you should see how fast these landlords repair things once they're not getting the rent. And, and, when you do a good job, I'm always the first here to congratulate you, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Hunt on number 18?
Yeah, this is number 18. Here's how I feel, just try and help the people vote yes on this and try and help the people and the landlords.
Very much, that concludes public comment on number 18. We'll go ahead and open the vote, close the vote, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Now we're gonna take up item two for cards. Again, Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Hunt, followed by Mr. Previn. And Mr. Hunt and Mr. Previn, if you want to start, come on up, feel free.
Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is the Gang Reduction Committee. I mean, totally worthless, the Gang Reduction Committee. Nobody says, and this is from them, and this is a, this is a maintenance of a sewer extension. I don't know what that has to do with the gang reduction. Ongoing maintenance for Venice Pumping Plant Junction Structure, no additional environmental effects other than, it's all crap. And the city attorney's office to make necessary deposit, probable just compensation, that means money going to somebody who gave you money in your office holder account. This is the city of Los Angeles at its worst.
Mr. Hunt, Mr. Previn, if you want to start making your way as well to the center, that'd be great, because you're right after him. Thank you.
Yeah, this is the Red Chief Hunt speaking on this. Final Environment Impact Report for Gang Reduction. I don't know what this is about, actually, but I know this. I don't know what the gangs have to do with reduction in the public works area, but if it's gonna get them jobs, I want to vote yes on this. The Red Chief Hunt, yeah!
All right, thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioner Wesson. It is Eric Previn from CD2. And item number two is the final EIR report for effectively a sewer project in Playa del Rey, where I looked at it actually when it was at the Coastal Commission level, and, you know, it's a big job, frankly. And I, they gave their approval, so I think that this is probably moving forward. The California Coastal Commission, the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, all have jurisdiction that kind of intertwines for these kinds of important infrastructure projects. And obviously, we have to fix sewers near the water, near the coast, especially carefully so that we do not have, obviously, leakage or problems with the environment. The environment is precious down there. There are limited parcels, and there's Bonin, who is not here, I don't think, at the moment, but he certainly knows, we have to be very cautious about what we do permit in these spaces. So this is obviously permissible, and we appreciate it. The Boat Central Project that went before the Coastal Commission in January, and they sort of rubber-stamped, needs to be looked at, and Wendy Mitchell, who you all know would be a good resource on why, because the problem is the public slips—
Not regarding the item.
Yeah, I realize that, sir, but I'm just mentioning to look into it.
What if you realize that, you're gonna stay on the item?
Well, absolutely. This is right down in Playa del Rey, right on our coastal waters, right where we put our boats into the water nearby. And so the point is, you need to avoid Boat Central, which is a project for a valet boat service. It's, it's not appropriate. It's for large boats, it's expensive, we can't really sustain such a thing, and it doesn't address ordinary residents of LA, city, county, and all of the jurisdictions who need access to the coast in a fair and equitable manner. So thank you.
All righty, so that concludes public comment for that item. Colleagues, we're gonna go ahead and vote on that item. On item two, please, go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and reconsider item three now for an ordinance vote. So we'll open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That item's now before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, thank you very much.
I have a comment on three.
I did too.
Item 21, Mr. Walsh.
I have a comment on three.
Hearing was already held on item three.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. These are, perhaps the most important thing here are these final maps. That's what they're voting on. No one is gonna talk about, this is where they, they upzone you or downzone you. If you're in a white neighborhood, they protect you. If you're in a minority neighborhood, they're, as you know, they're pushing all the blacks and then the Hispanics out of South LA. And take a look at these final maps. The final maps are where they sneak in permission for them to build mini malls, maxi malls, mega malls in your neighborhood and destroy it. Even if they don't destroy your building, your home, when they build a mega mall a block from you, the price of your home goes down, because no one wants to live near a mega mall. HollywoodHighlands.org, fool you on the maps.
All righty, and we have an announcement from Councilmember Bob Bloomingfield. Before we vote.
Great. Ross, would you come up here for a second? For the last three weeks, we have had the privilege in my office of having a Coro fellow who has done an amazing job over these last three weeks, and I wanted to, to recognize him here. He's been working on transportation issues, the Orange Line, helping do some research, working on some press conferences, and I hope you've had a good experience, but we've had a great experience in having you in the office. So I wanted to give you this certificate on behalf of all of us here at the City Council. Thank you for your, your work with us.
Really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, thanks.
Excellent, congratulations, thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and take that item now and vote on it, if we can open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we're gonna take some of the general public comment cards, because I know we've got some people waiting as well, and then we'll go back to that, and then Becky Dennison, followed by Frank Tambureo.
Where's item?
Excuse me, don't yell out from the council chambers, that's disrupting the meeting. If you've got any concern or issue, you can go to the side and talk to the Sergeant-at-Arms, followed by Yolanda Alanis. Excuse me, ma'am, you're disrupting the meeting.
You need to do your job!
Excuse me, ma'am, no, I'm sorry. If you keep disrupting the meeting, we're gonna ask you to leave council chambers. You understand that? Thank you very much. No, please do not yell out from council. Unless you're at the podium, you're taking time away from the speakers and this meeting, and I'd like to make sure that we, we grant the same time and gratitude and be courteous to our speakers, so, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Becky Dennison, and I work with the Los Angeles Community Action Network, and I'm here on behalf of 130 organizations and civic leaders from across the city to submit a letter to you all that we already submitted to the Homelessness and Poverty Committee, but we wanted to submit to this full council regarding the announcement about the state of emergency. We understand there's gonna be a lot of agenda items on Tuesday, and so we hope that you will take action that day to decriminalize homelessness, decriminalize the possession of property in public space, and create a fund for permanent supportive housing. That said, you're creating a fund on Tuesday with no money in it, and if you really think there's a state of emergency, it's not only about declaring that legal state of emergency, it's responding to the emergency that we're seeing on our streets. And I know we've talked to some of you, and there's really good intention, but we need action. I've also heard people say, we need a plan, we don't know what to do with $100 million. We do. We need homes in the city of Los Angeles. We need permanent supportive housing in the city of Los Angeles. It's the number one priority. It is what every planning process will tell you. You need to find some money, and you need to find it now.
Great, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Frank Tamburelo. I'm the Director of Hunger Action Los Angeles. We're an organization of other organizations and individuals working to end hunger and promote healthy eating in LA, and we're proud to be one of the 130 organizations that signed on to this letter from LACAN. We support the three demands, for real money, to end homelessness, to end the criminalization of homeless people, and to move in hygiene facilities. And I just want to say, as someone who's been doing this a while, we've seen this over and over. There was Mayor Han with his tenure plan, that didn't go anywhere. Then after, right after that, Mayor Vera Gosa came up with a tenure plan, that didn't go anywhere. Years have passed since those tenure plans. Let's not let this be one more failure. Homelessness is not a fringe issue or a niche issue. No place with 13,000 new people a month facing homelessness can interpret this as anything other than an emergency, and in the case of LA, it's a sudden emergency decades in the making. So, you know, it was very nice to have Councilmember Wesson with the, the dog at the start, but let's, we can save human lives as well as animal—
Thank you, thank you. Yolanda, followed by—
I'm Yolanda Alanis with the Freedom Socialist Party, and I'm also supportive of the letter that was written to you, the open letter about funding $100 million per year at least towards housing units in the quality of life in safe, safer cities, stop the enforcement against homeless. And I just wanted to point out to Herb Wesson that I'm in your district, so I'm happy to be here, and I hope you're hearing this. I also want to add that there should be a moratorium on evictions. There should be an expansion of rent control and stop the massive redevelopment projects who aim is the displacement of the poor, mostly black residents. Stop giving developers free pass to wreck our neighborhoods. I'd like to hear a response from you, if not what you can't do, but what you can do. We have a crisis in Los Angeles, and we should be the ones stepping up to the plate in terms of solutions and being a model city for our residents who need our help right now in terms of the homeless crisis. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Dogon, followed by Sam Appel, followed by Quanzi.
I was, I'd like to start off by saying, if this committee put as much time and energy and love into housing homeless people as it do dogs in the city of Los Angeles, we wouldn't have a homeless problem. And, second of all, I was at the, I was, I was at the state of emergency press conference, and when it was you, what's his name, Wesson, who, who, yeah, it was Herb Wesson who first said that we're not gonna, that the city is, is not gonna criminalize people. And I asked you, I said, where is Chief Beck at? And you told me, oh, it's not about Chief Beck. You know what I'm saying? Two days later, they shot and killed a homeless woman just 20 blocks from here. You know what I'm saying? So it is about Chief Beck, because that's who you invest in, that's who all y'all invest in. For the last 10 years, you've been investing all into the police. I went to a lots of commission meeting last week, and it was service providers that do transitional housing was there like three years old, jumping up and down complaining because their funding is gone. And the commissioner was trying to explain to them about this new federal point system, which they ain't getting no more funding. So my, my story is, because you only gave me one minute to talk. You know what I'm saying? There's just some things that y'all can do right—
Thank you very much. Thank you. Sergeants? Sir, thank you very much. Sir, sir, you're, okay, sir, you're disrupting the meeting now. You can come back on anytime you'd like and speak anytime at general public comment as well.
Good morning. My name is Sam Appel. I'm a student at the UCLA Masters of Urban Planning Program and an employee of the Institute of Inequality and Democracy at UCLA. I just want to make two, two points. One, that the picture of homelessness in LA is showing that homelessness is expanding to every part of our city. In UC, up at UCLA and in Westwood, we're seeing more homeless folks than we've seen in years past. And, and we're seeing increasingly that the homeless folks that on the west side are like the rest of the city, it's an increasingly, increasingly racialized problem. The homeless population is increasingly black and decreasingly white, so we know that this is an issue for the whole city, and it's a racial justice issue for the whole city. What is the best policy? If you're a decent human being, you know that the decent, that the best policy is to stop criminalizing homeless people. It's right, it's what's right, and it's what works. Disallowing people to have private property on the street, disallowing them from sleeping, and incarcerating homeless people is an intolerably cruel way of attempting to solve the portable housing crisis.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much. Thank you. Quanzi, followed by Christopher Carter?
Yes, thank you. My name is Quanzi Enkrum. I am the co-chair of the Martin Luther King Coalition of Greater Los Angeles. I'm also the president of the Echo Park Neighborhood Council. It is very ironic to come down here knowing that the city council has declared a homeless state of emergency on the tail of several discussions on, from this council on repressive acts against homeless people. Repression in terms of keeping people from sleeping in their cars if this is the only place they have to be. Repression in terms of confiscating people's personal possessions. The bottom line here is our city needs leadership, and we need it in the form of massive amounts of money to address the homeless problem and provide services for home— of money to address the homeless problem and provide services for homeless people and for our communities. And we also need the city to stop selling off vacant city properties and start utilizing some of these empty buildings to house human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Simon, followed by Pastor Q.
Hi, Mark Simon, 27-year resident of Los Feliz and Silverlake, and I'd like to add my voice to this, to the state of emergency that's going on. Case in point, the crossroads of Hollywood Boulevard and Vermont Avenue. I'm tired of watching the police harass homeless people from one side of the street to the next. They go from Barnes-Dole Park to Hillhurst and back, and this is happening every day, and nothing is, it's not doing any good. It's an enormous waste of money, and something has to be done practically to help the homeless people, stop the police harassment. Go down and see for yourself.
Pastor Q from the Church Without Walls, Skid Row, Southern Christian Leadership Conference, and Clergy and Laity United for Economic Justice. Skid Row, I've been working on Skid Row for 10 years. There was a state of emergency in Skid Row 10 years ago. It wasn't a state of emergency when you guys said it was a state of emergency, it's been a state of emergency. And the problem is, when you're, when you spend $87 million on law enforcement, that says to me, and people can hardly afford housing in Los Angeles. The issue is housing, the issue is mental health diversion, we've got all kinds of issues, and we're always looking at law enforcement to rectify the issues. And we're rectifying the issue in Skid Row because 90% of the people on Skid Row are homeless, who are homeless are people of color. And we're rectifying the issues the same way we do in South LA, because we're used to that. And now we have Black Lives Matter in our community, and the reason we're crying Black Lives Matter is because this is the way we always handle our situations in our communities of color. We need to change that.
Thank you very much, thank you. Ravenous?
Good day, Mr. President, Councilmembers, passionate homeless people. Homelessness is a crisis. It's not that we're screaming at you because you're not doing nothing, it's because it's contagious. You sit there every day when you walk by someone on the street and wonder what it's like, you think about your dollars that you have in the bank. I'm not here to do this. I'm here to set up a meeting with the mayor, there's things in me that need to come out to help the homeless community, above all, to help the vets. I've been out here for nine months, and you guys require that a homeless vet be on the street for a year? Nine months just crippled me, my bones ache like you wouldn't believe. And you see someone homeless on the street without nothing, it's not because he lives that way, it's because last night it got stolen. You guys have people breaking your houses, your cars, and take all this. We know what it's like. I got dreads, delivered over a great stutter for 36 years--
Thank you.
--that speak with the mayor.
Thank you.
I'll be out on the sidewalk till you get ready.
Jaclyn Richardson? Yes.
When is Baca as Chief Sheriff coming back to his old job? According to the American Red Paws, every seven minutes there's a natural disaster. There are too many, including in Los Angeles and the surrounding counties, including fires, floods, freeway fires, and so on. These natural disasters are unnatural, it's caused by sin. Too many men are making babies and women, and they're not supporting the children, they're making babies on purpose. Too many married, too many men have too many wives. This nation needs to get back to the Bible and the Ten Commandments to erase these natural, these disasters.
Thank you, thank you for that. So, thank you, so far, we've got more speaker cards for general public comment, but we're gonna go ahead and go back to the agenda for a moment as well. So, for those of you that have some cards in, we're gonna come back to that, and with that, if you're gonna disrupt the meeting, we're gonna ask whoever yells out to step out, so you know. And with that, we're gonna go ahead and go back to the regular agenda, then we'll come back to public comment. And so, Madam Clerk, if we could, please go back to the next item.
Item number 19, called Special for Cards.
Gideon Krakoff on 19? I actually don't see Gideon in the room.
Right here, sir.
Yeah, you're not Gideon. John Walsh?
This is my--
Hey, Gideon, when you hang up on the phone, I called your card, so you can come on up right after John.
This is my fourth minute, not my fifth minute, count it up. John Walsh, this is tree removal, permit process. Well, everyone knows, you don't need a permit to tear, to cut down a tree. Who remembers when Hollywood Boulevard was full of trees? But the, all of a sudden, the people who worked, the owners of the buildings decided to tear down the trees, chop down the trees. This, $300,000, not to chop down trees, but to create a permit process that everyone ignores to chop down trees. That's what we have here. And I'd like to wish everybody here, from the top of a tree, I'd like to say, have a wonderful Friday the 13th.
Thank you very much. Gideon? How are you?
Very well. Mr. Pro Tem, Councilmembers, my name is Gideon Krakoff, I'm an environmental lawyer, strongly in favor of this particular item, which is to revitalize and pay more attention to our tree program at Public Works and the permitting process for trees. The tree removal and replacement policies in this city need a lot of work. I've talked to many of you and your staff, mostly pro bono, it's been persuasion, it's been litigation, policy ideas to try to improve this process. The issues are in CDs 8, 9, 10, 11. I've worked for groups like Community Health Councils, Sullivan Canyon homeowners, the West Adams Neighborhood Council. You know, these trees matter in our communities, particularly in the urban areas, it's a quality of life issue, where maybe sometimes all that there are are ficus trees that are beating up the sidewalks. They're beautiful trees, yes, there are sidewalk problems, but in some areas of this city, that's all there are, and they have to be treated with respect, it's a quality of life that makes a difference in the communities. This is an issue at Public Works. At Public Works, the Urban Forest Department needs your help and attention, the Community Forest Council needs your help and attention, they need experts in staffing, they need technology, and they need better policies and permits, and that's what this motion will support. This motion's an important step. We also must identify the Willet settlement. The Willet settlement, $30 million a year for sidewalks, is an opportunity, but it also is perilous for the trees. Use that Willet's wisely money, that Willet's money wisely, don't destroy our urban forest in the process, it should be a balance. Many criticize CEQA, but this is not about CEQA delay, CEQA is for things just like trees. You should do a program EIR on Willets, make sure that you're taking account for the trees as you embark on that program. This is a great motion, I support it. Please revitalize the Urban Forest Street Department, thank you.
Thank you very much, Gideon. Eric, come on up.
Good afternoon, or good morning, Mr. Englander. There are two items, 16 and 17, but 19 is the one before us, if I have it correct, right? 19 is the Bureau of Engineering, or Public Works and City Engineer are engaging a group who we have seen before named Parsons Transportation Group, they have an office in Washington, but really in Pasadena. And, you know, I thought, oh, this is good, I like trees, I'm not gonna look into it, but I thought, someone has to. So I did, and obviously I'm disappointed to see that their consultant, the production program manager is making $254 an hour, sir, with a homelessness crisis. So, how much does $300,000 get of that? Not much. I mean, we, you know, this is, this is hard to believe, quite frankly, larger project, what they have is a contract with the city, and rather than explaining how it works, that this group, that's very government-sucky friendly to other governments, to help out, is taking, you know, you just put $300,000 and it gets into their big contract, so nobody quite tells how much they're actually getting. So I would do a Public Record Act request for how much Parsons is in city contracts collecting on a regular basis. I just, it upsets me, because I love trees, but when I see this kind of expenditure to a consultant making that kind of money, you guys were in here fighting for $15 an hour, $254 an hour? And he's not the only high-paid guy, and there's nothing wrong with Gary Peterson, by the way, I'm sure he's a good man, but, you know, this is, this is really, and this is to go, B permits, like Mr. Blumenfeld got a few B permits expedited for Westfield recently, this is to do permitting of taking trees, what are we doing? We have a crisis. So I, you know, Public Works can be helpful in many ways, and we absolutely respect the trees, and I'm even appreciative for Mr. Farrell's motion, which is a little silly that we have to trim the trees because we have to stop crime from happening in the untrimmed tree area, like prostitution. Bullshit. It's, you know, I feel like we can do, we should be rejiggering the budget in a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers, none on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Great, thank you very much, and if I can ask Councilwoman Martinez to come on up. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 20.
Item 20, called Special for Cards.
Patricia McAllister, item 20, ma'am.
Item 20, I'm Patricia McAllister, gang reduction, it's really not about that. When you see two or three black men standing on the street, that's supposed to be a gang. That's not a gang, that's some men trying to make some money to take care of their children. Now let me tell you something, what a gang is. This is a gang, right here, this council, white supremists, this is a gang. You bring these shows in here selling a dog on dog, when you got a homeless man, men and women laying out on the city hall lawn. Bring some of them in and adopt them. To heck with a dog. Wesson of the 10th Ward, we want him out of there. They, he's letting them destroy Limerick Park where black people go in there once a week, and you go down on Wilshire and Alvarado, those Mexicans been in there for over 10 years. There's no such thing as no gang. This is the game. People are trying to make a living, they're trying to take care of their children, they're trying to stay out of the homeless environment. We need Herb Wesson out of office--
She is not talking about this item.
This is the game.
Stay on the subject.
Item here.
Stay on the subject.
More concern need, we don't need that concern about tree trunks growing out of the ground. I called and sent pictures in to the mayor of a tree trunk that, I don't know how wide it was, you can kill yourself--
You gotta stay on the item.
--right, that is the item. Oh, gang reduction, excuse me.
Item is number 20, correct?
This is a form of terrorism, this is what I typed.
Okay, look, you have to stay on the subject.
Gang reduction is a form of an act of terrorism against black people. This is the game, okay? Do what you're supposed to do. Herb Wesson, we're gonna get you out of office.
You're off the subject, thank you, thank you very much. Your time has expired. Okay, so now, Mr. Walsh is out of time, Ms. Ramirez, Antonia Ramirez, followed by Eric Previn, followed by Ravenous Catalyst, I believe it is, this is on item 20.
Thank you. There should be no contract, nada, for the implementation of the LA Violence Intervention Academy Program, LaVita, and for intervention services to the Southeast Third Gang Reduction and Youth Development Zone. The only public safety academy, academy, that will work is deportation, deportation of all racist, hate-mongering, wetbacks, and gangbangers. That's the only academy that will work, deportation.
Stay on the subject.
Stop subsidizing these wetbacks and gangbangers, deportation, okay? No more academies to the wetbacks or the gangbangers.
Okay, you're off the subject, stay on the subject.
The military veterans, that's the only academy that works, and for legal, law-abiding citizens, that's the only academy that should work, and should be the priority of the City Council and its members. Again, restore America, God bless Donald Trump, because he's the one that's gonna do it.
Thank you, you're off the subject, thank you. So if I could have, you're disrupting the meeting, if I could have Mr. Previn, followed by Ravenous Catalyst.
Yes, it's Eric, I'm sorry, it's Eric Previn, a resident from CD2, on item 20 today, which is obviously fairly supportable. This is a group called LaVita, which is the Los Angeles Violence Intervention Agency Program, I assume it's supportable, both the mayor and the council are interested. The Advancement Project, which we appreciate, was involved under Contract C125622, but they are being settled out at 75,000. The go-ahead, which was very confusing to me, it took me, by the way, whoever wrote this agenda item ought to take a leave of absence briefly to regroup, because it's utterly confusing, but I looked at it, and what it says is that, sort of, not to exceed $224,000 for the period from August 15 to June 16, fair enough, but then it also says, up to, not to exceed 555,000, retroactively from July 15 to June 16, so, with an option for two years. So, is this a $750,000 deal, or is this just a $225,000 deal? I mean, these might be great guys, and let me just say one thing, the Advancement Project is for the first piece of 75K, it looks like there's a, sort of, a move forward with a different partner for LaVita, which is Community Partners. Now, Community Partners, as we all know, deserve our heightened respect, as well as scrutiny. This is a group that takes a high percentage of nonprofit money to administrate and manage for them. This, again, worries me, because they have their fingers in so many pies, that it is, it would blanch the typical residence mustache on a regular basis. And so, I would just ask you to be sure that this is the appropriate thing. I think that certainly spending money in gang reduction and in efforts to make peace is exactly what we want, so I hope that that's really what this is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ravenous, please come forward.
Hey, and to the Native Americans, la'onte tu'uwa'te.
Stay on the subject.
I became a menace to this society at 19, at the University of Utah, four-year full-ride scholarship, because of the new seatbelt laws. These are how you initiate violence in the youth, this is how you make the youth want to piss all over everything you hold dear, is you start caging people illogically for birth rights that they exercise, like wandering around uncaged. I work with a Community Partners Program, we're Justice by uniting and Creative Energy. We were invited to--
You have to be on item 20.
Is this not a Community Partners Program?
No, but be on item 20, you're not on item 20. And I have to be fair, because we try to keep everybody else on subject.
Well, if you have 10-year-olds, in three years, they are going to be, again, destroying everything you want them to hold dear, if you're still caging people illogically for birth rights, so if you want violence--
Thank you, thank you, your time, thank you very much. That ends a comment on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, I want to move quickly back to general public comment, to Ruth Sarnoff and Rabbi Klein, please come forward, we missed you the first time around. And then we'll go back, finish the agenda, and then we'll restart up our general public comment. Yes, ma'am?
Ruth Sarnoff, I to support the homeless state of emergency declaration, which was signed by 75 organizations, many of which are coalitions, and 58 individuals of distinction in our community and nationally. I want to say that the most important resource you have for solving the problems of homelessness is to involve and sit down and work with and empower and give a place for all of these people who for decades have devoted their lives, they have cared like Jeff and Catherine at the Catholic Worker, who have created one of the only places where there's some trees and there's a garden, and people come and can sit the way people should share bread together, and thank you.
Thank you. Rabbi, and again, I apologize, we kind of missed your cards-- Rabbi, and again, apologize, we kind of missed your cards in the shuffle, we wanted to have your group all speak together, so I apologize for that. So the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much, no problem, and Rabbi Jonathan Klein with Clergy and Leit, United for Economic Justice. I know many of you, in many contexts, we are on the same side, fighting for a better Los Angeles. You know, it says in Deuteronomy 15:11, one of the most commonly known passages, it says, "For there will never cease to be poor in the land; therefore I command you, you shall open wide your hand to your brother, to the needy, and to the poor in your land." And I think we all agree with that general sentiment, but where we seem to differ is how to do that. Do we open up our funding, our source of income, to, to ensuring that people have a safe place to sleep? Do we make sure that we're focused on their best interests? Or do we focus on criminalization and confiscation and all those things? It doesn't say anything about confiscation of property. So Clu and many, many of our religious leaders engaged in the fight for better conditions for the homeless are encouraging you to do the right thing with the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Okay, we'll now move, we will now move to item 1, and then when we finish that, we'll, we'll take up the remaining of the general public comment speakers. So item 1, I'd like to call, Steve, that's it, I'd like to call forward Marion Penn, if you're out here, Ruben Herrera, or Francis Herrera.
And, Mr. President, as the speakers are coming forward, there is a request to continue 1H for two weeks to December 1, and 1N for one week to November 20.
Okay, so that might take care of Marion Penn. Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Sir, you want to come and identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Ruben Herrera.
Okay, I got you. Go ahead.
Yes, I, yes, I don't even know, we need to speak here in front of everybody, but I yes, have a situation to be here. I, it's an existing couple, when I buy the property, and I tried to get permits to remove it, I mean, to leave it, and I pulled the permit, I make new plans, but finally, they told me, we need to remove it, and I did, and this happened two years ago, three years ago, and I get a letter, we need to pay like $2,000, so this is why I'm here.
Okay, so what, what I want to do, if it's okay with Mr. Sadio's office, and I get, I just got the signal, if this gentleman to your right, if you talk to him and Mr. Sadio to give us enough time to work it out, why don't we give Mr. Herrera two weeks? So Mr. Herrera will continue this for two weeks, speak with the representative from Council District 1. So on 1J, that item will be continued until December 1. Okay, so now, I'm looking for Atusa, please come forward. Nasimi?
Hi, this is regarding the property in North Hesperia Avenue. I've received the letter that there is a fund for the compliance, and the date they have here is four days later when they signed as the due date that I supposed to do the compliance. And I did it even before the date I supposed to do this compliance. I never lived in that house. This house has been vacant since I purchased, because I had to fix it, and I didn't have the chance to fix the house. Since I purchased the house, it's vacant still now, and I always kept it clean, and everything I supposed to do, I did for the house, but somehow, they, you know, charged me for the charges that I should not even pay for it, because.
So why don't we do this, and I'm sorry to interrupt, why don't I get you to hold for a minute, we bring up, or, Mr. Coretts, what would you like to do?
If we could have staff come up and.
Yeah, I was gonna have Charles come up.
I think we're pretty close to having a solution. And my understanding is that compliance was achieved before the deadline date, even though we charged for a late fee for being slightly late. At worst, it's very fuzzy, and at worst, she would have been five days late, but it appears she was actually in compliance. So I'd like to ask if we could calculate the amount of the late fees and remove those from, from the charge, and just have the base charge, and if you could tell us how much that would be, and if that's correct.
Oh, okay, thank you so much. My name is Charles Calibah, I'm here to represent the Department of Building and Safety on item number one. Regarding property address 4958 North Hesperia.
Keep going, John.
The property owner owes $3,671 to the department due to some violations of the Los Angeles Municipal Code. She performed some construction work on the property in 2013. She complied, but she complied five days late, only five days, but she was issued with a $550 non-compliance fee, adding a late fee of 2215, a CVIF fee of 356, accumulated interest of 457, to make it 3,671. According to the talks we've had with the council member's office, the council member wanted to take out the late fee, which reduces the lien to 1,457, and that, I believe, the department will be acceptable with that amount.
So I, I would move that we remove those late fees and charge the base of 1,457.
I think still, this is a lot, because I should not even pay anything. I did this compliance before the date. If the inspector signed it after the date, this is the, only four days difference of the, and that has been done, even I had my contractor, who did that two times, came here, I paid for it just to be as a witness.
Okay, well, let me, so you, so you just want to reduce the fines and move forward?
Yes, I, I think that the baseline violation did exist. I think every effort was made to comply timely, and it appears there's a, a good chance that compliance was done timely, so I'd like to ask that we keep the charge of 15, of 1,457 in place, but remove the late charges of 2,000 some odd dollars.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll let you conclude.
Only few things I need to speak here, because since I've received this letter, I talked to different inspector, and each of them came with different idea. One of them said this is because of the pool discharges, one of them came up with, this is for the brush cleaning, which is, this house has no trees, nothing for brush cleaning, and there is a gardener every week cleans over there. I have all the receipts that I pay the gardener, and this letter is telling me about the compliance, and I really don't know, maybe if I pay for this compliance, then I get another charges for brush cleaning or pool. I have to know what is this exactly I have to pay for.
Okay, Mr. Coretts.
And, Charles, I don't know if you can describe exactly what the violations were, so she understands and doesn't expect to get recharged for things that she's already paid for.
I don't want to come with another charges regarding.
Okay, now, look, we gotta have a little order. Charles?
Thank you so much. The violation include, I'm reading it directly from the order to comply from the Department of Building and Safety, it says, "Approximate 15 by 30 feet addition attached to the single-family dwelling in the required site yard without permits." So she performed construction on the, on the building, on the single-family dwelling, without permits, and the inspectors I've talked to, I've said that she did that, and she keeps denying that, and we've exchanged communication and emails, we can't get her to, to agree to that, but the inspectors insisted these violations are correct, and the lien should be confirmed, but the council member wants to help her out and take out the late fee, which we believe is an opportunity for her to take, if she wants.
Thank you. So, Mr. Coretts, you know, we can, you want to vote today, want to give a couple of days so that there can be conversations with the office?
I, I think things are clear enough for us, I think I'm ready to, to assess the initial penalty only.
Okay, so you have the nine seconds left.
He's my contractor, who did the demolishing for the place, so I just had him to be here.
Good morning, President. As she's saying.
But your time is, your time is expired. We'll think on that for a minute. I'd like to call Mr. Previn.
Mr. Wesson?
Yes, Mr.
Perhaps before we pass this, if I could just have a couple minutes aside with them, and then we'll.
Okay, why don't, if, if you guys could move to the, my right side, and have a moment with Mr. Coretts, so if I could have Mr. Previn.
Right, I'll be.
Followed by Patricia McAllister.
Sure, it's Eric Previn, a resident from CD2, and on behalf of.
Oh, I'm told you're out of time.
Members of the public.
Mr. Previn, I'm sorry, I'm told you're out of time, correct? All right, so if I could have Patricia McAllister, she has time, correct? Okay, Ms. McAllister, please come forward. Mr. Previn, I'm told that your time has expired. So if I could, and Mr. Walsh, you as well.
Mr. President, I'm very upset about people losing their homes. We have enough homeless people, so I have a suggestion. If the Mayor Garcetti and this city council wanted to help homeowners keep their homes, you would create a fund similar to the Handyman Fund, where homeowners who are seniors and low-income will have the city pay for those violations to have their homes fixed. This is to prevent seniors and low-income homeowners from losing their homes. Now, based on my analysis, I'm a computer scientist, I have a Bachelor of Science, Computer Science from Chicago State University, I have concluded that money allocated for building affordable housing, under the Housing and Community Investment Program for the fiscal year 2015, 2016, is 62 million, okay? Now, I think most of that money is usually stolen each year by the politicians and their friends. Hunt put Los Angeles on probation in 2015 for not spending 77 million on affordable housing. I said not, this is about housing.
Let's stay on the subject.
Now, versus the money given.
Ms. McAllister, please, on the subject.
This is about the housing, I'm not off the topic.
No, trust me, you are.
Okay, now, let me finish, please. Versus the money given to the police department, they get 1 billion, 338 million.
Thank you, thank you, your time's expired, you were warned. Okay, so, Mr. Coretts, it's time for us to move forward on, on these items, I need a.
And, Mr. President, there's also a request to continue 1T for one week to November 20.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. Yes, Mr. Coretts?
I think I'm going to continue this item one more time.
Okay, so till November 20 or December 1?
Whatever the soonest time is.
That would be one week, that would be November 20, so that item is continued. Let's prepare to vote on what's remaining. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That brings us, Madam Clerk, to general public comment. I'd like to call Mr. Walsh and, and Mr. Previn, please come forward.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, the city clerk refuses to sign my time. Number one, this is Friday the 13th, Votar, V-O-T-A-R-R-E, the demon that haunts City Hall. If you cannot see Votar now, that means you are evil. I can see him because I am not evil. Votar, you want to see his picture? You want to find out how, on Friday the 13th, he runs the city council? Go and see it. And I, the homeless people, the poverty pimps, the homeless poverty pimps, they're not here anymore. They left once they got to speak their little poverty pimp thing, so they can make a little more poverty pimp money out of homeless, but we have now a homeless place, the red line, there are hundreds and hundreds of people living in the red line, and they're homeless.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Previn, followed by Ms. Ramirez, followed by Ms. McAllister, followed by Mr. Hunt.
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD2. Sir, today, there are about five, 10, maybe 10 items that are donations, including a donation of $18,000 for tree trimming, for LAPD. Now, these are given through something called the LAPD Foundation. The total aggregate of all these gifts is about a million, $2 million, frankly, $2 million in various gifts. Now, you should put who's giving the gift on the front of the deal, okay, because it's ridiculous. You squirrel into the item, you can't even tell sometimes. Sometimes you find it's Motorola, or Taser, or one of, but we should really disclose it, I think it's appropriate. Three dogs, each worth $9,600, is being donated to LAPD, so they'll all get some kind of a tax break. Sir, you have to do something urgently, that is, when people come down, your constituents, to speak before this council, you need to provide equitable frame on the telecast, okay? Right now, nobody could see me, not that I'm so great, but we want to see the other people when we're at home, okay? So do it, sir, make it fair for the people of your community. They, they want to share with you their feelings, sometimes they're praising you all day long, like today with Mr. O'Farrell and Janasson, who's running for supervisor.
Thank you, thank you. I want to just acknowledge Mr. O'Farrell for a very important introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Would you quit disrupting the meeting? Okay, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I would like to acknowledge the sixth grade class from Elysian Heights Elementary School in the Great 13th District, led by teacher Steve Zabo. Please rise.
Yeah, give them a round of applause. Welcome, young people, look at yourselves on television.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you. I am a legal, law-abiding citizen and homeless, because I am a victim of gang stalkings. I am subjected to brute force, theft, vandalism, harassment, assault, every day and night, by blacks and racist, hate-mongering, wetbacks, and chungo Latino gangbangers and thieves. I am here to donate a vandalized shopping cart to the city of Los Angeles that is right behind me. I'm donating that to the city. I'm also, I also had a disturbing conversation with Officer Morris, God bless Officer Morris, I respect him. He told me that I couldn't bring my newly bought shopping cart, since I don't have a car, I brought a new shopping cart that is neat and ordered and clean. Since I don't have a car, I can't put it inside downstairs in the garage, in the vehicle, so I bring it up with me. Now, I am debating that, I would like to bring my newly bought shopping cart with me. And having said that, again, and my other second broken shopping cart is at the Music Center Grand Park, where most of the theft and vandalism's occur every night. God bless Donald Trump, may he win for president.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Your time has expired, Ms. McAllister, followed by Mr. Hunt, followed by Mr. Marine.
To build affordable housing, 62 million is being spent. This is the budget. Go online, everybody, it's online, go to the City Hall's budget. What do they have for policing? 1 billion, 338 million. What does that mean? This is a clear sign of a communist Zionist, white supremacist, and their plan to overthrow the US government. The money spent on building affordable housing is nothing compared to the billions spent on the police. This act across the US means that the people will be driven into poverty, and the police will be on hand to force the police state in the United States. Look at the big picture, folks, these people are in here taking your housing. Mr. President, Wesson, why don't you bring a homeless person in here once a week and see if you can get them some housing? Don't bring no dog on dogs up in here, okay? I know where to go get a dog at, I can go right over here to the pound and get a dog. Don't you dare, you got, you asked for 98 affordable houses in your district, District 10, when you've got thousands of black people living on the street. We Negroes, we gonna get you Negroes out of office.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt, followed by Mr. Marine, followed by a, I believe, a Mr. Medina.
Good afternoon, the Red Chief Hunt here. I want to say a few words of surprise, you never, never put taxes during election time. Number two, the city of Los Angeles arrested me the other day, they made another boo-boo, they didn't put Fuck White Niggers Too on the ticket this time, but they arrested me, Black Lives Matter, over at the L.A. Police Commission, so my bill's gonna be $430,000 this time. I hope you guys just sign off on it and save yourself the attorney's fees, because you guys made a real big boo-boo. You never arrest somebody during a public meeting in recess in the lobby. The meeting is open, the Brown Act explains that to the public. Thank you guys for the $430,000 check next year, I love you guys, and please don't put Fuck White Niggers on my ticket no more, this is what you paid the $215,000 for. Anybody want a copy, just see me after the meeting. $430,000.
Thank you, your time's expired. Mr. Marine, followed by. Mr. Marine, followed by Mr. Medina.
Yes, my CD8 representative over here, he said he understood every word in this letter, and he says, you're gonna be making back payments on behalf of we the people, because we know MU35 and 62 shows in black and white how much members of the city council volunteered to hold for the benefit of city employees and failed to provide to our principal and interest money protectors. Instead, y'all did a ERIP, which is supposed to aim for employee retirement income protection, y'all just ran, run, run on the bank. Now, what's wrong with y'all people? All my heroes is turning on zeros live, and they cut along with Channel 35, because you can't count, you got craft disease, can't remember to come for things. And then how you gonna hide shit from a plumber? You gotta be stupid.
Thank you. Mr. Medina, please come forward.
Hello, council. I'm here to speak about yesterday's El Pueblo Commission meeting, and it was unveiling of the architectural renderings of what they're going to do to the most historic buildings, the Pico House, the Merced Theater, and the Masonic Lodge. I hope you all know what's going on, because the council voted to change the interiors of those buildings, and it's going to be permanent and forever. We're going to lose great, great Los Angeles history. I'm a big advocate of arts and culture here in Los Angeles, as most of you know, and I just say, this project is a misguided project. There are other alternatives, with our Quimby funds that could be used for making restoration to the Pico House, Merced, and the Masonic Lodge, not Channel 22 cable fees. So I thank you for listening to me, and if you love culture and history, we celebrate American, Native American culture today, and what do the Native Americans have left? Very little of their culture, because it was stolen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment. Well, I didn't see your card, but Ravenous, come on.
Could I have my two minutes?
Now, just come on, you, you can speak now.
Safety of the herd actions are fear-based. 7,000 people still die a year tripping over their own feet. Suicides are the only deaths that we can even attempt to prevent. If your teen studies these lyrics of Ian Babbitt's, the next two remixed, they will never think about killing themselves. "The harvest appeared less plentiful than last season. I imagine sloppy seed handling evoked a stroke of tardy planting. And the crops we would have harnessed mid-November had just brushed the blossom bracket, then soon sacrificed lives to icicle jackets when the frost hit. I sunk to find the warmth beneath the mosses, with the plant tunnel passed after the rains had run their courses. But alas, these frost-bitten corpses tortured in the grass left this torch supporter one tall glass of nauseous. And we are infinite, like NY Kitchen cockroach infestations avalanched over your safety dance comas, just theridactyls. And we note the endless dignity sabbatical. And I shovel coal for the slick piston benediction. And I'm a tutor recruiter slapped happily oblivious to Nazi born again pagan agnostic rallies."
Thank you, thank you. That concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted and referred. We have, we are at announcements. Members, any announcements? No announcements? If all could please rise, if all could please rise for adjourning motions? Please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Englander?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Mel Cohen, a respected San Fernando Valley business leader who recently passed away on October 25th. Mel was born December 16th, 1940, was a second-generation Angelino, and Mel was raised in Los Feliz and attended John Marshall High School before graduating from UCLA in 1963. Soon after, he settled in the San Fernando Valley with his young family. Mel continued to maintain his ties to the university, was an avid Bruin football fan and supporter of the UCLA band. With deep appreciation for the history of Los Angeles, he often took his family on Sunday drives to explore different parts of the city, was often called on by friends and family for backstreet navigation to the streets of Los Angeles. Mel began his accounting career in 1970, and eventually serving as managing partner as Kirsch, Cohen, and Bridge. Active in many professional associations, Mel served in many leadership roles at both the state and local levels, as a member of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, California Society of Certified Public Accountants, and an associate member of the San Fernando Valley Bar Association. Mel also generously donated his time and professional knowledge, and served actively on boards, including the Valley Industry and Commerce Association as his chairman of both the Valley Economic Development Center and FIM LA. He was a member of the City of Los Angeles Business Tax Advisory, and was active in various professional, community, and civic organizations, and was the recipient of many honors and awards. Mel survived by his wife of 52 years, Wendy, his children, Alyssa and Gary, and his grandchildren, Lindsay and Jonathan, his brother Barry, and his mother-in-law Helen, his brother-in-law Stephen, and his nephew Jan. Donations in Mel's memory may be made to CSUN, the Mel Cohen Endowment Fund, or the Executive's Jewish Home for the Aging, or the UCLA Marching Band Fund. I know Mel was a friend to many of us, and worked very closely, particularly with the Valley Council members. There's not a place you could go, there's not an event you could participate in, there's not an issue that he didn't work on, on behalf of the people, where he committed so much time and energy, and his involvement and expertise on so many issues was so helpful to all of us. And it's very sad to learn of Mel's passing, and he will always be remembered certainly and respected in my heart, and I ask that we adjourn in his honor.
Thank you. So I'm continuing to look to my left. Mr. Sadio?
Members, we have a challenging job that we've, we've taken up, and in the course of it, we get encouragement from certain activists that we see in our community. You just mentioned one, those that, that come to all the events, that volunteer, that, that say little but do much. And Frank Wada was one of those. It's with a heavy heart that I tell you about Frank Wada, who just passed away November 11th. I was just with him. We have, and you've heard me talk about the Kenny Washington Memorial Game that we have every year, and I was just with Frank at the game, and he's just, he was just everywhere. He's just constantly, ever-present. Didn't say much, you know, little guy, small, but always there, handing out stuff, signing people up, volunteering. And I remember right before I left, I'm on the field, and then we took this great picture, and we have this really wonderful picture. I didn't know that he was sick, I didn't have any sense that there was any, any problem with him, but evidently he, he was, and he passed away suddenly just the other day. He grew up, you know, Japanese-American in, in Lincoln Heights. He was student body treasurer at Lincoln High School. He was a founding member of the Key Club, you remember the Key Club? And then he went to UCI in the early '70s, graduated, came back to the community, worked with his, his family at their store on Workman, and was, you know, part of the Chamber, you know, Scholarships for America, Chapter of Dollars for Schools. I mean, just a good civically-involved human being, just a great guy. You know, he didn't, he was involved in the bid, he was vice president, Kiwanis Club, all the great, you know, civic organizations. I really appreciated him. I don't think he supported me when I first ran, but in the last two years, I think I earned his support. And, you know, I never asked him whether or not he was a supporter of mine or not, but he was just always there, and I just appreciated it. It didn't really matter where he was, because he was with the community, and he was at every single meeting. And he's just gonna be missed, because he, all our cleanups, he was there, you know, just there. This is the guy who came and did everything, so he'll always be remembered for his love of community and will be greatly missed, and just sadly, he passed away suddenly on November 11th, 2015. God bless him and Lincoln Heights and the Northeast will miss him.
Well said. I'm now looking to my right. Do I have any adjourning motions on my right? I do not. Just as a point of interest, I just want to inform you that our 100% adoption rate is still alive, and the reason why I mention it, the dog was adopted by Ben Resnick, so we're gonna make sure that the dog is registered as a lobbyist. Anyway, have a good weekend, and this meeting is adjourned.